Good evening and welcome to the October 30th, 2019 North Idaho College Board of Trustees meeting. Would you all please rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Trustee Dunlap, would you mind reading the mission statement tonight?
I'd be more than happy to.
Thank you.
The mission of North Idaho College is that North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho communities it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning.
Thank you. We do have a quorum tonight, and I would like to welcome a special guest. We have Jake Garringer here from the North Idaho Field Director for the Governor's Office. Jake, would you stand so we could recognize you? Great, thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate it. And if you have any questions of the board afterward, we're happy to stay and chat with you. Welcome. Board, have you had a chance to review the minutes? If there are any changes, please note them. If not, we will accept them as written. Okay? And no one has signed up for public comment. I'm hearing something about a baseball game. Is that what's happening right now? Okay, alright, we'll try to keep this short. So our very first topic this evening, celebrating success. Suicide Prevention Summit and NIC certified CRU trainer, Tim Gerlitz. Welcome.
Graydon's gonna interview soon.
Thank you, Graydon.
Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, colleagues and friends, thank you for this opportunity to introduce Mr. Tim Gerlitz to you. I should note that just the other day, in Tim's part of his job here is working with student health, we had flu shots here on campus. Tim's had a lot of responsibility for managing that, and one of the nurses stopped me the other day and asked me if I was going to take care of these flu shots because she was convinced I was Tim Gerlitz. And I'm not sure what the likeness was, but I'm flattered to have been compared to Mr. Gerlitz. So it truly is my pleasure to introduce to you Tim Gerlitz, who's our Director of Disability Support Services, Student Health and Counseling. Tim has been, and his staff have done incredible work certainly over the last two or three years in providing support to this community and to this college in a couple different ways, and I've asked Tim to come tonight and share that with you. I want to certainly pass along our thanks for the leadership that President McLennan made in this regard toward a suicide summit. We know that's been critical in our nation, in our state, in our community, and with the President's support, Tim and others here have put North Idaho College forward as being a leader in our community to address that issue. Along the way, you've probably heard as we've had incidents in our community, we've offered the resources of the college, Lakeland High School, at Corlaine High School, at Lakeside High School, and other places, we've offered our resources. Tim and those that, he's a part of an organization to provide support, and it's really extraordinary, the work that Tim and that group has done in providing support to this campus and in this community. So it truly is my honor to introduce to you, to celebrate the work that he and his staff have done, Tim Gerlitz.
Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, President's Cabinet guests, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I have a small slideshow tonight, celebrating success. This is our second annual North Idaho Suicide Prevention Summit this year. First one was held last fall. This was held October 3rd, and our theme this year was best practices in suicide prevention. Last year, we presented a general introduction of North Idaho's work with regards to suicide prevention. This year, we presented a number of tools and techniques for the community to consider using in their home communities. The college isn't the only partner here that puts on this event. It also includes Laura Whalen, who's the Director of Panhandle Health here in North Idaho. Dr. Claudia Mywald is part of our team. She is the Director of Behavioral Health at Kootenay Health. We also have Holly Bonwell, who's a Program Manager with the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare, the Behavioral Health Division, represented across the five northern counties. Laura Whalen is also the Chair of our North Idaho Suicide Prevention Action Network, also known as SPAN, and then the work of the college as well. This year, we had 130 registrants sign up for the Prevention Summit. These individuals were targeted by our group, representing leadership across North Idaho. School districts, there are 16 school districts in North Idaho, hospitals, faith-based communities, state and federal agencies were present, law enforcement, sheriff's departments, as well as police departments, nonprofit agencies, we had a number of state legislators here this year, and city, county officials as well. President Rick McLennan gave our welcome message to the group, and very poignant, he underscored the role of the college in the community and in North Idaho as being an excellent platform to bring people together in discourse, bring people together to share information, and also the educational role of the college. So it really makes sense that we're part of this community effort to decrease suicide rates to zero in North Idaho. Also, as Dr. Stanley mentioned, last year was a number of tragedies in our community, and our crisis recovery unit team here at the college, for the first time in the six years I've been associated with it, was dispatched into the community at the request of different groups, school districts. And it was meaningful, worthwhile work. This crisis team essentially helps people who've been exposed to trauma and crisis return to as normal level of functioning as possible. That's really the goal of our team. And it also mitigates additional crisis. People who may be seriously impacted and may have some instability, the work that the team does helps them stabilize and potentially refer them to additional supports. But I'll be honest, the team was a little bit exhausted after being dispatched to the community multiple times. So President McLennan engaged me and said, "We need to get people together in a room to talk about this, to try to look at some problem solving. So what can we do?" And he spun that out. Dr. Stanley opened up some resources, and then we moved forth with that very first conference last year. Very meaningful event. First on the agenda was Dr. Claudia Mywald with Kootenay Health. She talked about global and US trends in suicide, so she kind of gave us the big picture of suicide across the US and the world. She shared some very disturbing statistics from 2017, and in 2017 in the United States, there were 47,000 deaths related to suicide, a death every 11 minutes. And she underscored, again, these are numbers, and they have, as far as in emotional content, numbers don't have that. And she really wanted to underscore, these are people that have lost their lives, that have impacted families and loved ones in their communities. And when people are here, whether it's been a slow buildup of issues over time, or a traumatic catastrophic event in somebody's life, it's definitely a black tunnel for them. They can't see light behind them, they can't see light in front of them, their options are zero, they can't see beyond that. And they may or may not be apparent or visible to people around them. Of course, our goal is to try to recognize when people are suffering like that, and we're able to reach out and provide support to them. College campuses across the United States, this statistic isn't up there, but 2,100 college students commit suicide every year. And when college tried to illustrate that, rather than a number, they collected 2,100 backpacks and filled the backpacks with information about suicide prevention and mental health support, and scattered those backpacks across the campus. So as students came to school that day, they were faced with an illustration, each backpack representing an individual who had taken their life across the United States that year. So I bring this up because numbers are difficult, they just flow off the tongue, there's no meaning to those, but these are people. Many, many, many people contemplate suicide that don't take their lives as well. As far as a national strategy, Dr. Mywald said it's been kind of a slow to develop. The Surgeon General's Office put together a strategy in 2012 to attempt to decrease the suicide nationally by 20% by 2025. And then Dr. Mywald kind of challenged the audience. She asked them, "What is our strategy going to be here in North Idaho? Can we enhance and coordinate efforts? Can we have commitments for this to work?" So she asked everybody in the audience to make a commitment before they left the summit. Next was Laura Whalen, Director of Panhandle Health. So Laura presented more statistics related to North Idaho, and between 2013 and 2017, a five-year period of time, in Kootenay County, we've lost 151 people to suicide, 46 in Bonners, 27 in Shoshone, 14 in Benowa, and 13 in Boundary. Laura is also the Chair of the Suicide Prevention Action Network, the North Idaho SPAN chapter, and we're a member of that, North Idaho College. It meets monthly, it's an open community meeting at Panhandle Health. And they've plugged in in so many ways in our community, spreading word, question, persuade, refer, QPR. We're working with them to train 10 to 20 additional crisis teams over the next few years, are going to help us coordinate those efforts. They hand out gun locks, trigger locks at gun shows in our community, a lot of education, a lot of awareness, and survivor support. And this kind of wrapped up the additional, I won't go into detail on these different tools or presentations that were made, but Kim Kane presented on zero suicide, which is essentially an assessment that can be administered to people who are struggling in physician offices, in mental health agencies that have shown to greatly decrease, mitigate the potential for suicide for high-risk individuals. Applied suicide interventional skills training, also known as ASSIST, which they call kind of a power-packed QPR, it's much more in-depth. Crisis intervention training, which I worked at the Department of Health and Welfare, Behavioral Health back in the 90s when we started to develop this training for local law enforcement, talking about stigma, talking about symptomology related to mental illness, and how to recognize this, and how to help people de-escalate verbally and other techniques and approaches. Sources of strength, which you may have heard, is implemented in our school districts, teaching kids coping skills, different mechanisms. And then QPR, question, persuade, refer, was presented by Jill Ainsworth with Panhandle Health. Our strategies, one of those tools that we presented last year was mental health first aid. I'm sure there are some people in this room who have taken the mental health first aid class, it's an eight-hour certification course. It's like CPR in first aid. This is now internationally accepted certificate program. Deb Cracher is one of our student therapists here on campus, and Deb is the Certified Mental Health First Aid Instructor, and she has now trained over 500 NIC staff, faculty, and students in the past three years. And the mental health first aid class does help people to recognize and persuade and refer as well, but it particularly addresses the stigma of mental illness. You know, it's hard enough for people who are struggling with life stressors to go in and seek help from a counselor or ask somebody for assistance, somebody who's struggling with really paramount difficult things in their life, some may not reach out because of the stigma of asking for help. I know we have several veterans in the audience, I'm a veteran as well. Part of our culture was pull-up bootstraps, do-it-yourself, and plow forward, and sometimes we need to reach out and ask for help. The other thing is mental illness. It is not a weakness of character, it is a genetic, social, biological illness that once people are afflicted, they may have to live with symptoms for their entire life. People with schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, major depressive disorder struggle with symptoms constantly. And, you know, society has reacted to people with mental illness in ways where, in fact, they're saying, you know, "This is a flaw of your character," not understanding the nature of mental illness. So part of this training addresses that stigma, and it's been very significant, the change that we've seen in these classes that Deb gives. The crisis recovery unit, I've already mentioned a little bit about that, we have 20 certified team members. We provide responses to the NIC as well as to the community, helping people return to those normal levels of functioning. And our long-term goal is to help train 10 or 20 additional teams in North Idaho. Finally, student counseling, just a little bit of an update. Thank you for your support here, by the way, we were able to hire a second therapist, Blake Poe. Blake grew up in this area, he's been clinical therapist for over 20 years, and he pretty much hit the ground running here. Now we have two clinical therapists. Best practice nationally for higher education is one full-time therapist per 1,000 students. So both of these folks are 0.8% full-time, so we're up to about one and a half positions now for our student body. They've done outstanding work, those of you who've worked with Deb, those of you who've met Blake. You know, this semester alone, we've had over a dozen students who've presented with suicidal ideation. Several have been put in protective custody and hospitalized, and others we've been able to work with and surround them with supports. So without that support, I wouldn't even want to guess what could happen for some of our students here. We're also working to provide outreach services to the other campus locations. Those students pay the same fees as the students here in Corlaine. So tomorrow, our counselors are heading to Kellogg, they were in Sandpoint a week or two ago, so we're finding different ways to connect. And group counseling is a pretty powerful modality, so we're looking at ways that we can engage students in group counseling, and then increase our drug and alcohol abuse addiction supports. I'm also a drug and alcohol counselor and work part-time at Kootenay Health myself in the inpatient and outpatient program. So we're recognizing addiction in our campus community and are providing some outreach in working with students as well. And with that, I just want to thank everybody for your continued support. We're looking forward to the third annual Suicide Prevention Summit next year, and I'm excited to see what direction that goes. So thank you very much. Open for questions.
Very good, Tim, thank you. Trustee Dunlap.
Just a comment, first of all, Tim, thank you for all you do for North Idaho College. And if through training so many people here at the college, we can save one student or one employee from suicide, it is more than worth the investment, so thank you for that, plus all the disability services that you provide.
Thank you, Trustee Dunlap.
Agreed. Trustee Howard.
I'll kind of double up on Joe's thank you, because it goes not just for NIC, but what you do in the community, beyond NIC. And that brings in my question, about two slides back, I noticed, and I didn't catch the subject matter, but it said that, I think it was some kind of outreach program for NIC and the community. Yeah, provide response to NIC and community. And would you describe that when you say "community"? Is it countywide? Is it...
Yes, so...
Live-county-wide?
So last year, when our crisis team was dispatched into the community at special request of several of the school districts, what we noticed was there was a lack of crisis team support throughout North Idaho. There are three certified teams in North Idaho. North Idaho College has one, Corlaine School District has one, and the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare, Behavioral Health has one. They've had problems behavioral health mobilizing because of the work they're doing with designated examinations at the hospital. So their ability to mobilize is about zero currently. So it was between us and the Corlaine School District. So what we've done is I've been through a series of training this last year that has certified myself as an instructor to be able to train crisis teams. And we reached out to all 16 school districts and asked if they're interested in having their own team certified, able to respond to these tragedies. And as we're having this dialogue with the community, the CROCK Center approached us, the hospitals approached us, we have several nonprofits beyond that who are approaching us who would like teams. So we are reaching out in that way. Now, how do you mobilize or manage that many teams if we can get to that point in North Idaho? This is where Panhandle Health stepped forward, and they said, "We will put the resources and the infrastructure together to manage these teams and to mobilize them as needed." And that includes the debriefing process as well. So that's what I mean by kind of our outreach to the community. And we see that as a viable partnership and part of our educational role as well.
Well, thank you very much for taking NIC to the next level when it comes to that kind of an effort. Quite frankly, so many people, when they hear the concept "community college," I don't think they realize the expansiveness of what we try and do to help the community, and here's a good example of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Howard.
Trustee. Thank you, Tim, I appreciate that. Having worked in the districts, I know from experience that oftentimes, districts always try to look inward and serve themselves, and too often, they're too close to the situation, and they... We worked on crisis response teams and that sort of thing, but it's always good to have an outside agency come in. So once you've come in, what do you do for your mental health after a tough situation and your team to get refocused or get away from something like that?
Thank you, Trustee Murray. There's a critical component of crisis team management, and that's the debrief process. So a good example related to what you're presenting is last year, we had several tragedies in the Corlaine School District. Their team was compromised emotionally, they could not provide that service because they were themselves in trauma. So they reached out to our team and said, "Can you please come and take a key role, the lead role, and help manage our milieu here at the high school?" Which we did. And afterwards, we had several additional people come and debrief our team. We have specific steps of debriefing and ensuring that we engage in self-care. And during the process of engagement in whatever activity we're in, any team member can make a decision not to be involved because of potential trauma in their own lives. We had a suicide, and terrible suicide of a young girl, 12-years-old, at one of our junior high schools last year. My daughter was 13 at the time. I'm the lead of our crisis team, I could not respond to that. For my own self-care, I had to disengage and ask Deb, our clinical therapist, to take the lead of the team. So we're always checking in with each other and making sure that we are okay, and taking a break when we need it, and have formal debrief after the event. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, for your service.
Thank you.
Tim, it seems like a kind of a different thing to celebrate success, but it truly is a success, everything that you and your team have done. I'm especially proud of the crisis team and what you've done out in the community. I know a lot of the people that have affected, I've responded myself way too many times, and it's amazing the difference that you can make in bringing people back together again and helping them move on. So we're so proud of you at the college and your team, please pass that on. Thank you for an excellent presentation.
Thank you, Chair Wood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us on to our constituent reports. First up is ASNIC, Paul McLeod.
Good evening, Chair Wood, President McLennan, members of the board, and members of the audience. It's a pleasure to be here today, I'm very thankful, and I can't believe that we're already in Week 11 of the semester, it's gone by so incredibly fast, again, I can't believe it. But I'm really excited about what ASNIC is up to, and I'm excited to let you know about some of the things we're doing. Currently, right now, we are, we put together a Constitution Review Committee, and that's been meeting regularly since we organized it. And what started out as being an editing of the Constitution, we are going to add a few things regarding the dual-enrolled representative. We saw that there was a lot more to be done than we originally anticipated, so we've turned it into a larger effort, and it's going to be, it's going to be an ongoing process. We're hoping to finish by April so that we can pass our changes to the student body and have it be voted for there. But it's going to be mostly involving structural changes, there's a lot of things that are in the Constitution that should be in the bylaws, and bylaws that could be in the Constitution, so we're just going to take a real good look at that. I told you last time about some of the projects that we're doing that I'm really excited about, like our newsletter, which is coming together very nicely, and our mentorship program. I want to tell you about a couple others that we're doing right now. We're also working with the tobacco-free campus policy, and we're continuing to work to get that approved, and it's been an effort that we're trying. And we're also working on creating an informed recycling process as well, and one of our senators is incredible, we're all very passionate about it, but she's taken a very, very lead role in that. And another senator, our new senator, who's on the soccer team, is working to create a mural downstairs in the sub, and giving the opportunity to the arts program to come get involved in that, so also very excited about that as well. So November is here, and we are organizing a budget planning committee, so we're going to be doing that in the next month or so, taking a hard look at our budget and getting that taken care of. I talked to you last time about a couple of our positions that are still open. We're getting started right now, the application is open right now to get those position-filled positions filled. We also got met, we also had Steve Kurtz come to our morning workshop meeting to talk a little bit about accreditation, how we can have a part in that, be helpful and be informed as well, so that was also very good. And then before I leave, I also want to tell you about a few of the events we got going on. We have the Events Board working very hard, they just did a free skate night, and it went very well, had a lot of students come and enjoy themselves, and I've heard a lot of students come to me and tell me it was a great time, and they hope we do it again in the future. We have a bowling night planned on November 22nd, and that's going to be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, right here in Corlaine. And then we also have a visiting speaker, Tony Osborne, come talk on November 6th, it's a Wednesday from 12:00 to 1:00. So those are a couple of our upcoming events, and we're really excited about those. Thank you all so much for allowing me to speak. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Paul. Board, any questions of Paul?
I have a couple.
Trustee Banducci.
Okay, where are you going to go bowling?
Oh, it's, let's see, it's the bowling rink, right here in town, I'm forgetting...
Is that Sunset?
It is not Sunset, I believe.
Okay.
Thank you so much. River City Lanes.
Okay. And then you said a free skate, was that like up at Skate Plaza or something like that?
Yes, right here, it's Skate Plaza.
Okay, okay. So roller skating or in line, but up at the facility there?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly. Thank you, Trustee Banducci.
Just curious, and it sounds like fun, I was just wondering where you were doing it.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Graydon, you had a question?
Thank you, Chair Wood. President McLeod, would you mind introducing the other celebrity who joined you in the audience tonight who's a member of ASNIC?
I would be happy to. I have here one of our senators, he's recently been brought into the group, his name is Hayden Blanks, and really excited to have him onboard, and he's been very passionate, working very hard. And he's actually taken up the lead role in the tobacco-free policy and working hard in that regard, and he's doing a fantastic job.
Great, welcome Hayden, pretty soon you'll have to sit in the front. Great. Welcome, Hayden. Pretty soon, you'll have to sit in the front. Very good report. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you so much, members of the board.
And tonight, sitting in for Tom Green for staff assembly is Jeff Davis. Welcome.
Thank you very much for the welcome, Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, counselor, president's cabinet, my colleagues, and the audience present and the audience at home. Thank you very much for having me here this evening. It was a little bit of a surprise. I'm especially glad I attended this particular staff assembly meeting I'm going to report out on today. Besides the usual housekeeping pieces, we did, we always make sure to mention our latest Sterling Silver Award winner, Diane Holbart. You might have met her or know her. She is Assistant to the Dean of CTE and Student Services. We also had Steve Kurtz join us. Steve Kurtz is getting all over the campus. He is doing an amazing job. He is so upbeat. He's a man that can make accreditation sound powerful and fun. So it was really nice to have him there. And it felt really excellent to the staff at large to know that we all play a role, no matter where we are, no matter what position we occupy. We all play a role in accreditation. And so he likes to break it down. He likes to tell us about why it's important, what it's for, and all the connected pieces, financial aid and transferring for students. He gave us some reading homework, which I'm quite certain we're all doing diligently. And he is, he did let us know that we do have the mock visit coming, and that will be November fifth, sixth. He wanted to make sure that we understood what a mock visit was, why it needed to be done. And then, of course, April fifteenth, 2020 looms. Besides, again, the usual housekeeping pieces and speaking out on the various committees and subcommittees we belong to, Kathy Sparks, who is one of our senior admin assistants, executive assistant, she brought up an idea that we all got behind very quickly, which is a campus-wide executive, sort of campus-wide outreach center group of admin assistants. Admin assistants at NIC are, there can be some turnover there. And happily, in many cases, that turnover takes that person to a higher level at North Idaho College. And we're always happy to see that for them. But when an admin assistant moves on and moves up, we got trouble. It's, we got to get somebody in that position. It's an incredibly busy position, and it's spread out throughout the campus. So it makes it very difficult for somebody new, no matter what kind of experience or how many years' experience they have. Makes it difficult for them to just jump right in and get the job done. And it takes a good year for someone to get up to speed in some cases. The idea is that these folks could meet. They could have a web presence that would be theirs alone in order to communicate with each other, ask each other questions, how to do a purchasing order. Anybody that's done one of those knows that can be somewhat complex. So we wanted to be able to get those folks to support one another and perhaps make a little bit smoother transition. Then we did our usual upcoming events, updated cardinal events. Every year, the HR department does sort of a harvest party, and it's always really well-received and wonderful. And I hope all can attend at some point. And then we adjourned, because that's what we do. Are there any questions, folks?
Thank you, Jeff. It was nice of you to fill in for Tom. Board, any questions?
I have a comment.
Trustee Banducci.
You're looking sharp, brother.
Well, thank you very much. Drug my suit into work. As a note, it's sort of part of NIC culture that if somebody who doesn't normally wear a suit shows up in a suit, it's very upsetting for their colleagues because they believe there may be some sort of interview process going on. Bit of a shakeup and advising today. We survived.
Fantastic.
If there are no more questions?
Excellent report. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chris, every time I say your name, I say it wrong. Pelchat?
Pelchat.
Pelchat. Faculty Assembly, thank you.
Chair Wood, President McLennan, board members, those gathered here today, thank you for having me here to provide the faculty assembly report. At our October meeting, we began with our normal order of business and provided a couple of reports from the Senate and myself to our constituents. Kind of basic stuff, just talk about nothing huge there. We moved on to old business. One of our old business items, we had Policy 5.16, which is focused on student complaints. We still had some conversation about that policy. Faculty are still kind of unclear how it's related to classroom behaviors. But I think by the end of that conversation, we ended with some clarity, and then also an idea that maybe that policy might need to be tweaked a little bit in the future to be a little more clear. So that ended. Under new business, we had Dr. McLennan and Chris Martin to the assembly to talk to us a little bit about current enrollments and where the budget is. And the faculty were very appreciative of their attendance to provide transparency on that and an opportunity for them to ask questions. Whenever enrollment starts being talked about on campus, no one really knows what the true story is until it's told directly. And so we appreciated them coming and providing that to the faculty. During the remarks of the Good Order, several faculty took the opportunity to share events that were coming up on campus. And then we concluded our meeting of the assembly. Each month, the executive committee of faculty assembly meets. And this October meeting, we picked a couple things that we wanted to take the time to work on this year as an executive committee. We identified two major priorities. Like ASNIC, we picked up our constitution and bylaws and shook the dust off of those and kind of took a look at them. And there are some things that we need to address in there that have either changed, or we don't quite operate that way anymore, or the language isn't clear enough. And so we decided to take on that challenge and redraft those and have that in place for the next leadership team. The second priority is a focus on how we solicit the faculty for their shared governance obligations. Right now, the way that we do that with the faculty is a little cumbersome, and it also doesn't set our committees up for success in the fall. Just takes us a little bit too long to make sure all those committees have the right amount of people serving in the right places. And then to also make sure that the faculty are following their contract obligations. And so we are going to work with Shannon Goodrich and make sure that that process is a little more smooth in the future. So those are our two major priorities as an executive group that we are planning to work on, and our hope is to have those completed by April. That's it for me. Floor is open for questions from y'all.
Thank you, Chris. Board, any questions? No? Great report. Thank you. Now, Ben, I ruin your name every time, too. Go ahead, give me a hint.
Tishida.
Tishida. Ben Tishida, Senate.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The Senate has met twice since the last board meeting. In that time, we considered a couple of policies. I'll start off with copyrights. We had passed that one before the last meeting and sent that on to the President. He came back with a couple of minor revisions. So at our first meeting, since our last board meeting, we did accept those revisions, and so you'll see that tonight. We also passed the Electronic Information Technology Accessibility Policy and Procedure. Those are also on the agenda tonight. After that, at our next meeting this month, we had a first reading on the Intellectual Property Policy and Procedure. Those are policy and procedure we looked at last spring, passed those, sent those to the President. There was some feedback, and so now we're reworking through those documents. We also did a first reading on the Creation Revision and Elimination of Policy and Procedure. Procedure, just as a little history on that one. The policy itself was passed by this board over the summer, and there was more work to be done in the procedure. That was sidelined for a little while. We had one of our members has been out. And so we're now picking that back up. And again, that one should be hopefully done here relatively soon. Again, that's going to have a new schedule of review for policies, and we'll be implementing that schedule starting next fiscal year. So that is my report.
Great. Board, any questions? Thank you. Good report. Next is our president's report, Dr. McLennan.
Thank you, Chair Wood. I'd like to extend my appreciation to trustees Banducci and Murray for joining me and other college representatives at the Association of Community College Trustees in San Francisco a few weeks ago. I also like to acknowledge trustee Banducci, who along with two of our faculty, made a presentation. Turned out to be one of the highlights of the conference. Those two faculty were Ted Tedman and Casey Wilhelm. And the subject of their presentation was about an educational delivery platform that they've been developing over the last three years. And while it's, and it's truly impressive, and it's going national, it's, they're working with colleges in Florida, Texas, other states. But that wasn't the point of the presentation. The point of the presentation was to demonstrate, it was, I don't have the title with me, but it was really about teaching Generation Z students and some of the changes that have come through the technological revolution that we've been experiencing over the last decade or so, and how that's impacted learning, learning styles, and the need to be more adaptive in the way we deliver information and engage students. And what was really impressive about it was, while the platform was impressive, it was the consideration and the thoughtfulness and the research and the evidence-based approach they took in answering the questions in terms of how to deliver subject matter. And it was so impressive. There was standing only, standing room only in the session. This is a conference, as you know, for trustees. I'd say there were at least 2,500 people in attendance at this conference, so it was a pretty big one. One of the trustees towards the end of the session said, you know, I've been coming to this conference for many, many years, and this is the single best session I have ever attended. And while that's great, and it was wonderful, and they really did do a good job. This meeting was also the meeting of transition of power in the leadership of ACCT. And I happened to attend a reception for the incoming chair, and she got up to make her comments. And she said, you know, when I ran for the board in 2012, one of my platforms or stances was that, yes, while we need college-ready students, what we really need are student-ready colleges. And she went on to say, for example, I attended a session yesterday that was put on by two North Idaho College professors.
That's awesome.
And this is on a national platform. And she went on to almost, in some great detail, talk about the work that they did. And what was important was connected to her comment about student-ready colleges, and are we ready to teach the kind of students that are coming to us today and that will be coming to us tomorrow. And so there's some, that presentation generated quite a bit of interest about what's happening at North Idaho College and the entrepreneurial mindset and innovation, innovative spirit that our faculty have. And so we were very well represented. Trustee Banducci did an exceptional job of introducing North Idaho College, who we are, who we serve, and a little bit about our part of the country. And anyway, it was just a very proud moment for me as president to see that happen. So thank you. You heard a little bit about accreditation and the mock visit that's scheduled for November fifth and sixth. I believe we sent an invitation to the board to, as you're available, to participate in that. I've never done this before. I learned of this idea a year ago. I was attending an accreditation conference in Seattle and started talking with a colleague of mine. And we have, I don't know what the percentage is, but we have a very large percentage of faculty and staff at North Idaho College who've never been through an accreditation visit. And so to help create that experience, to help people understand, one more step on the way to April fifteenth, it made sense for us to go ahead and do that. And what we've done is we've sent a draft of our self-study to a mock team. They've reviewed that self-study, and they're going to come as though they were a visiting team next week and take us through the paces of a full-scale self-evaluation. We expect to learn a lot from that. We know we still have work to do to set ourselves up for the best outcome for the visit. But the feedback that we've received so far is very encouraging from the chair of the team about the documents that we've already sent in. We have the president of the Northwest Commission of Colleges and Universities, Dr. Sunny Ramaswamy, visited us last week. And this is not your NWCCU of yesteryear. He is a dynamic, passionate advocate for peer evaluation. He gave an outstanding presentation to the college community. I just heard anecdotally, there were some folks that were encouraged to attend that, right, like accreditation, I don't, I got to go listen to this, this guy talk. And people left the session actually feeling pretty good about accreditation and what it means and why we do it, and what their role is, and how important it is. So he did a really nice job, and we were glad to have him. So that's accreditation. And then I just want to, I hadn't planned to do this, but it occurred to me that it might be a good idea to ask Dr. Stanley. As you know, we've been resolving, dealing with a number of issues related to our athletic programs over the last year. Of course, some of those very publicly represented. And I just wanted to ask Dr. Stanley to talk a little bit about the letter that he received from the NWhac just a few days ago. And it's in relation to the question that's come up. It was presented to the board by some of our folks who visited last meeting about the desire to have North Idaho College return to the National Conference from which it, where it entered the NWhac from. And I think this is relevant information. I'd like Dr. Stanley to just spend a few minutes talking about that.
Thank you, President McLennan, Chair Wood, trustees, and other guests here. I've had the opportunity to be involved with the Nwhac, of course, for the last six months or so. Recently, attended some meetings in the region. A little information I got about a month ago had to do with the Nwhac's alignment with the NJCAA. As the president alluded to, there's been information in our community talking about this college's decision to move from the NJCAA to the Nwhac several years ago. The most recent news in the letter that the president was referring to came from the Nwhac to make that official, that NJCAA had reached out to not only the Nwhac, so that's the Oregon, Washington, and North Idaho College, Community Colleges, but also the California system, which has never been a part of the NJCAA as well, and asked them to consider joining the NJCAA. And so they have commissioned a study. They'll be working with all of those institutions. They've asked for representation from this institution as well. Will be participating over the next couple of years, looking at that possibility of, within our region, it would likely still be the Nwhac, maybe by a different name, but still traveling, competing against the schools that are a part of our region, but becoming a part of the NJCAA. So it gives us the opportunity, if we chose at one of the Division One or Two or Three level, to support the program as we desire and can afford to, but also to participate in a national championship. That's been an interest of some folks as well. So in many ways, it's the best of both worlds from all stakeholders' standpoints. We have local travel, we have local rivalries, we have a region that is easier for us to travel and navigate. At the same time, we have exposure to national competition, if that's what the institution desires as well. So it's an interesting possibility for us, and we'll be participating in. So, it's an interesting possibility for us, and we'll be participating in that study. The earliest that the conference could transition to NJCAA would be 2022, and so, it takes that long, even if we were choosing to do that on our own, to really make a transition. So, we're looking forward to participating in that process and seeing if it's feasible.
Well, that would be really exciting, wouldn't it? I know you're not done with your report, but on this topic, will there come a time to maybe give feedback from the board of, "We might really be interested in that, hope you all work it out"? Is that something that could come forward?
Chair Wood, yes. So, this is, this will become a very large, involved, complicated process. There's a lot of questions that all the schools in the NWAAC region are going to have about it, what it means for their institution, financially, travel, competition levels, all of those things, scholarship levels, you know, different conference rules, and so, they're going to take some time to get through this, but it's, you know, my early assessment is that it would allow us to continue to set the level of play in terms of 1, 2, or 3, and division wise, and also would, one of the biggest challenges that we had in being in the National Conference prior was the extensive and long-end-duration travel that athletes, student athletes faced. So, if this helps mediate that, but still give us a chance to compete at a national level, it would be something that we would definitely take a look at.
Be fantastic. All right. I'll let you finish your report, then the board can ask you questions.
Okay. Then lastly, we placed in front of you two memoranda from the governor's office that we received. The most recent, just yesterday, and it's outlining some, the first is the one I mentioned last month about the request to hold back 5% of our funds, state funds, and then the second is actually a current-year rescission and a forward-looking holdback as communicated by the governor. In relation to that, we've been doing some early budget work this year because of some known factors that are out in front of us that are going to have some structural impacts on the budget moving forward. And so, I'll talk a little bit more about this, but I want Chris to kind of walk you through the big blocks of this, and ultimately, what, not ultimately, but as a next step, this is introductory information to kind of set the stage for you. We intend to come back in November in a pre-board workshop to go into some more detail about sort of the long-term effort that we're looking at to get through some of these things. So, Chris, you want to take it away?
Sure. Members of the board, I just want to spend a little bit of time this afternoon. Finding the right PowerPoint would be helpful. Just talking about some of the known factors as we go into this next budget year. So, we've tried to work early, early in the process to look at the known pieces around this year's budget, and so, one thing that we know off the top is we will have a reduction in our enrollment workload adjustment. And that's the three-year average of our enrollment, that's how we're funded, from an enrollment basis, because of just the average downward enrollment. We'll be looking at a reduction of almost $150,000 this year. Because of the great work that was done the past two years in a zero-based budget model, we've got a really good handle on the total number of mandatory increases that we experience every year, which are tied to lease increases or contractual arrangements or program accreditation visits. And so, that number's $112,000. The estimated step increase with the benefit is $561,000. And then, as we go into looking at our opportunities over the next year, we've got limited ability and capacity to increase our tuition because of the statutory cap. So, based on the memorandum that you have in front of you, the most recent one yesterday we received from the governor's office, the impact of a reduction, a state general reduction for us is $214,500, and the CTE impact for a reduction is $115,000. And so, we're trying to model those as we go into this upcoming budget year, looking at what our knowns are, and really trying to create a strong environment for us to have a conversation. A couple of things that I would also note is, some of the early legislative rumble that we've heard has been discussions around limiting the ability of the taxing districts to increase taxes. And so, we're not sure where the traction is on that, but that's something that we've heard and we're keeping an eye on. We hear this almost every year, removal of forgone taxes and potentially limiting taxing districts to a 1% increase every year. What we're more concerned about at this time is a limited or no CEC. And so, going into this fiscal year, we've planned on no state support for the CEC, which is the change in employee compensation, which helps offset that state, that step impact. Couple of planning principles that we're really focusing on this year is really looking at retention and enrollment, and making those a key focus. And with that, we've had a lot of conversations about working diligently to impact the matriculation of dual-credit students coming into North Idaho College. We see that as an opportunity. Grayden's going to share more about that in the future, but we have a large number of our student body is dual-credit, and so, trying to make sure that we bring those into NIC on a longer-term basis. Other things I just want to point out about this is, I really appreciate Dr. McLennan's leadership on this, but he's asked us to create really a three-year framework on how we can address this issue over the next three years, to really look strategically at stabilizing the impact of some of the state pieces here, and making sure that we're being really strategic, and we are, we're lucky to have the healthy reserves that we have, but looking at how we can plan the future out over the next three years, and not just be reactive to some of these things that are happening kind of in the moment. So, I apologize, some of the numbers that you're going to see here are, haven't, don't reflect the latest memo from the governor, but just want to point out as we go into this upcoming fiscal year, just what we know today, looking at what we're looking at is $773,000 next year as of essentially October the 18th in revenue impact changes, that's the EWA, the fall revenue miss, and then looking at what we anticipate for our FY21 expense increases. So, that's that mandatory increases that we have through contractual arrangements, the step increase, so approximately $671,000. So, off the top, if we just rolled into this upcoming fiscal year flat, we'd be looking at reducing our budget or trying to find $1.4 million. So, just want to kind of make that point, as we go into this planning workshop in November, that's really our focus, is to come to you and say, "Here's what our knowns are, here's what our plans are," and work with you on what your thoughts are as we go into the FY21
Chris, I know you don't have the current numbers up there, but you've also added in the spring enrollment numbers, if they stay consistent with the pattern of another $350,000 in revenue loss, and then the rescission amount from the governor, I believe the numbers I saw earlier today put that up now a little bit over $2 million.
Correct. If we, we've looked at factoring in very conservatively, if the trend was to continue from enrollment, from enrollment standpoint, and we looked at next year, again, factoring in if we missed spring in the same way we missed fall this year, and then factoring in a very conservative, again, a 4.5% reduction in enrollment next fiscal year, that number is $2 million, yes.
Is this a time to ask?
Sure.
Board, do you have questions of Chris? I thought, oh, go ahead. Trustee Howard.
I guess maybe it's more of a comment than a question. Did I understand you right that the career and technical education program was going to be reduced by $115,000?
Correct. The base appropriation for CTE.
Right. You know, when I first started in this job, I went back and looked historically at some of the budget issues here, and when career and technical started out, it started out on the promise that the state was going to pick up the entire budget for career and technical. And incrementally, every year, the state has reduced its commitment in terms of the overall budget, and it had to be picked up by the students and the local taxpayers. And additionally, the state historically had paid something on the order of 40% of the overall budget, and now it's less than a third. So, every year, the state contribution to our operating budget goes down, and yet, our obligation to educate people in the five northern counties remains the same, and we've tried to meet that by having outreach centers and a lot of other things to try and fulfill our obligation to educate the populace up here. And I quite frankly don't understand how the state can say they're interested in education and continue to reduce their commitment to our, to our efforts to try and provide education up here. We keep putting it on the backs of the students and the local taxpayers, and the local taxpayers help us provide for these outreach centers and everything else, and we really rely on the state, quite frankly, for a lot of contribution, and to see it declining like this, I don't see that as an interest in education. I see it as an abandonment of education. So, I was really, I'm really disappointed in seeing these numbers.
So, trustee Howard, we have an incredible opportunity tonight, and I don't know, Jake, Carringer, if, we don't want to put you on the spot, but it's awesome to be able to have a dialogue with you, since you are from the governor's office. Do you mind chatting with us about some of this? Thank you. Kind of impromptu, but you're here, and that's fabulous.
Hey, Christie, can I make a comment while he's walking?
Certainly.
Because he can hear me talking.
Yeah.
There were a few insights I was able to glean while I was at the conference, and one of the breakout sessions, a couple of them, they had roundtables. One of the other topics that came up that seemed to be fairly consistent across the country and across the different colleges was the issue of dual enrollment, which was just mentioned a few moments ago. And I know we've increased slightly the compensation that we're getting for dual enrollment, but I think we're still inadequate there, and it was interesting to hear the folks wrestling with the same problem that we've discussed about how it's great we have so much growth in dual enrollment, but what we get paid for versus regular tuition, and then whether it's on campus or at a satellite location in a high school, and what those costs are in trying to get more of them to the campus. A lot of the colleges expressed they're trying to get more of them on the campus because it's more efficient.
Sure.
And trying to get more money from the state or however their program's being funded because it's inadequate, and it, it's a little bit of mortgaging your future because instead of getting a kid as a freshman and a sophomore, paying a certain rate, I'm getting them as a junior and senior out of high school, and they're only paying a fraction of that, and I may even be giving them the degree before they graduate from high school, but now I've just lost them as a customer, if you will, for the next two years, and I've got it at a fraction of the amount, which is wonderful for the kids and the family, but for our business model, maybe not so great. So, it's a mixed blessing with the success we're having with dual enrollment. It was interesting to note that that's a, that's an issue nationwide, and there are a lot of colleges grappling with that, and to be truthful, aren't many good solutions. I mean, there was probably, our table was overflowing and too deep, and it was more of a, okay, is there a common experience, and anybody got any ideas? And there weren't too many ideas what to do other than beg for more money.
Right. Well, we've got Jake here. So, just a quick question, and the board can ask questions as well. Trying to understand the governor's holdback, and I don't know, is that an anticipation of tax receipts? And if those tax receipts come in much higher, will he backfill them in his budget recommendation?
I can't answer that at this time.
[laughing]
I would say this evening, I am happy to take your questions and comments and get back to you, but I would like to refrain from attempting to speak on the governor's behalf.
Okay.
Or communicating any information that may be not complete or accurate, but I am, of course, happy to take.
I think that would be the number one question.
Okay.
What is it? Go ahead, trustee Dunnott.
I do have some comments, and I appreciate you being here tonight. The, and I guess I want to explain the catch-22 that community colleges have with the budgeting process for the state. Enrollment in community colleges is directly out of phase with what's happening in the economy. In other words, when the economy is very good, we don't have many students, and so, our revenues are low. Conversely, when the economy is poor, everybody comes back to school and wants to get retrained. Now, when you put that in the context of the state budget, when the economy is very good and our student enrollment is low, then the state takes money from us because of the low enrollment or the clawback. But when the economy is poor and we're bursting at the seams, the state says, "Well, our revenues are down, we can't afford to give you any more money, or we'll take, or we'll reduce the budget." So, there's this constant tension of being 180 degrees out of cycle with what's happening in the economy. And when the, and I'm going to quote the letter from the governor where it says, "Governor Little's number-one priority is education, preparing Idaho students for a lifetime of learning and eventual careers." The community college's primary job is putting people to work. People come to the community college and do one of two things. They go through a career and technical program and go directly to work, or they go in a transfer degree and then go on to a university and then go to work. And so, the work we do when the economy is down is vitally important to the economy, but that's when the money's clawed back from the state. And so, I'm not sure there's a good understanding of that out-of-phase cycle that goes on at the state level, and the community colleges are caught in this paradox where we just can't get ahead in terms of funding. And so, what ends up happening? The funding then gets made up on the backs of our local taxpayers or on tuition increases of our students. So, that's the complexity and the difficulty with which we have to deal with the state on budget issues.
Trustee Howard.
I guess I'm going to add to the, sort of, the data I guess we'd like to give you so that you can hopefully carry a message back. I don't remember what the percentage is of our enrollment every year, but it's a fairly high percentage of GEDs, like 40% or something like that, I think. So, when you look at people that have not made it in high school or coming back to try and get their general education certificate, they come here. We teach, we educate a lot of those folks. Same thing with adult basic education. So, we're in this kind of in-between stage. We're not, we're trying to help people make up for mistakes they may have made in not graduating from high school, but we're getting penalized in terms of the budgeting. When you look at the suggestions that I saw on the board of maybe getting rid of forgone taxes this year, or reducing the 3% that we presently have available to us down to 1%, I wish people would look at our history of that, because we have not taken very many forgone taxes, except once, to purchase that property immediately next door that is allowing for the expansion of this institution. And we don't take our 3% every year. Sometimes we don't take any. And that forgone tax is kind of a bank account for us. If we have a bad year, a bad problem, then we've got a bank account that we can go to that is the forgone taxes. And to reduce that down to 1% is further crippling our ability to just meet our budgetary needs every year. And when you look at our history, we have not abused either one of those. We've not abused the 3%, we've not abused the forgone taxes. And so, this whole idea of recognizing what community colleges are, they're this in-between educational phase that services an awful lot of people, both with high school education-level courses, and now we have these dual-credit courses that we're giving, and kids are coming out of high school, and they're getting an associate's degree at the same time they get their high school diploma. So, our population is a broad spectrum of people in the community, and to have these constrictions made, being proposed on our budget, it's going to really, I think, injure our ability to carry on our responsibilities.
Thank you for sharing that.
President McLennan, want to clarify something real quick?
Yeah, I do. I just, thank you, trustee Howard. I do want to make it clear that the 1% limit of property tax and the clawback, or the forgone piece of that is not coming out of the governor's office.
Legislative.
There's some legislative, I don't know how serious it is or where that's going to go.
I would hope that the governor would oppose it.
Exactly.
There you go, Jake. We'd like you to tell him that. Todd?
All I was going to mention is, as you were walking up, I was talking about the dual enrollment, and I was hoping...
enrollment, and I was hopeful you were able to hear that, see you taking notes. Please ask if we could continue to review, revisit the dual enrollment, because I do think that we've got to work on that formula a little bit because it's maybe costing us more than what we're getting reimbursed for. And again, we're working hard to move it more on campus, but it's expensive to teach the kids in the high school. At least here in the north, because of the geography of it and the demographics, you know, it's just not convenient to get everybody to campus in the middle of the winter. You know, there's some great distances, whether it be a Santa Point, or Priest River, or Bonners Ferry, or St. Mary's, you know, Kellogg. So we do have to rely on campus instructors, and that's additional cost when we already have a full faculty. So that funding mechanism could be continued to be reviewed. It'd be helpful. We're a bit underfunded there.
Jake, I can tell you that the reason you're hearing from all of us is because this is very exciting for us to have someone from the governor's office attend one of our meetings.
I apologize.
It's never happened. Please tell Governor Little how much we appreciate that you're here. We'll tell him ourselves, we'll send him a letter. But we want that direct line of communication, and I see that you're right here in Post Falls. And so we would really like to keep speaking with you, and we'll have our liaisons, our appropriate administrators, contact you. Want to thank you for listening to us, and again, for being here. It's -- I don't -- I've been here 15 years. There's never been a liaison from the governor's office that I can recall. President McLennan wanted to.
Yeah, I just want to add my appreciation for you being here this evening, and I know that we're trying to get some time on our calendars to get together. I'd like nothing more than to orient you to some of the key issues that are here for us, some of the big rocks that we're trying to move, and the challenges that we have, and, you know, anything that we can do to work in partnership with the governor. We fully, all of us up here, fully believe that community colleges, Idaho's community colleges, are incredible policy levers to be pulled for economic and workforce development. And we just got to work together to make that happen. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Jake.
Thanks for letting us put you on the spot.
Sure.
And please come back.
Yeah. [laughing]
So I can answer more questions in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anybody have any questions on the president's report? We didn't let anybody -- you covered a lot.
Well, I just want to emphasize, so EWA is a good example. We missed enrollment by four and a half percent this fall. So whatever our problem is with EWA going into this budget cycle, it's going to be bigger next time. And until we get enrollment under control, for all the reasons you mentioned, trustee Dunlap, that's something that we're going to be able to see in the future each cycle. And so what Chris and his team are working on is looking at these structural elements that we really can see going into the future, you know, CEC, and making some assumptions and creating some scenarios. So if CEC is zero-funded, we know it's going to be this. If it's, you know, if there's partially funded, if we take, if we do take property tax, we don't have very much tuition room right now. I think it's $2.66, and we hit the ceiling. And right now, and Jake, don't listen to this, their governor's office is not supporting legislation to raise the statutory limit for community colleges. Somehow getting swept into this idea that the four years will be required to hold their tuition down, and it's an apples and oranges scenario, but we haven't had an opportunity to get that corrected. So we'll likely be going a different route for that, but right now it's limited at $2.66, which, you know, for students' sake, that's a good thing because we, if we want to do tuition or if we need to do it, we're really not going to be able to do anything this go-around. But what I'd like to do is we're going to create a scenario or a series of scenarios that show us how to get to a three-year space where we've done managed reductions and development around enrollment and prudent use of our fund balance to not cause any kind of a budgetary panic, but to look at a strategic way of managing this going forward. And that's what we should be doing. So Chris and his folks are doing an excellent job with that, and we won't get into the detail level of that in November, but we'll certainly have the bones of it to show you how we're thinking of that going forward.
Trustee Banducci.
Yeah, maybe the national thing. I'd like to make a couple of comments on what the president touched on, and then I'm next with K-Tech unless somebody else wants to talk. But for a moment, I want to circle back to San Francisco because it was my distinct honor and pleasure to present with professors Tedman and Wilhelm. And a couple of things I'd like to mention. First off is your tremendous support, Chair Wood. This was about a year in the making when I came up with this idea, and you immediately supported it, and I'm very thankful. And we got a letter from the board and the senior staff. Dr. Burns was way behind it right away, too. We were in a van in Boise in January, and we're talking about it, and Rick's driving the van, and I'm talking about it, and all of a sudden it's like, well, I guess we're okay. And what about you, president? Oh, yeah, I'm good. You know, Rick's like on board, and he's hearing it, and there's the enthusiasm and the support. So thank you, president. Thank you, chair. Thank you, vice president of instruction, you know. And I know behind the scenes, Grayden was supporting us. We were very blessed to have Lita actually able to attend and watch her two instructors perform amazingly. Laura was there supporting us. We needed some support from her, and she was along with us every step of the way. Trustee Murray was able to be there. It was my pleasure to introduce him as part of our Board of Trustees, and so it was great to have him with us also. And we represented the college amazingly well. The room was overflowing, the doors were open, you never see that. People were sitting on the floor. It was highly unusual. And then after we got done, usually everybody scurries off because we were the last briefing of the day. No, people were there for 15, 20, 25 minutes, taking pictures. We had to roll back through the slides so they could take pictures. Ted was surrounded, Casey was surrounded, I was surrounded. Laura had brought a few things about the college. Those all disappeared like it was free beer. It was unbelievable. We were just, it was almost overwhelming, the feedback. And then for the next, that was on Thursday afternoon, the 17th. That evening, Friday, Friday night, Saturday morning, we were constantly being stopped in the halls, the two instructors, myself, the president, people acknowledging, complimenting us. I had people like, well, I had invited someone that I had met, and he came up after, and he said, you guys delivered the goods. And you have to understand that I'd seen him earlier in the conference after he came out of one, and goes, man, that was one of the most worthless briefings I'd ever been at. And so that was when he'd already been in that conference, and then he came up afterwards and said, best one I've ever been to. And different individual than who the president is referencing. I don't know who that was. So, and the stack of cards we got is like this, and the emails. I mean, it's amazing, the -- and that's, again, unusual. This was a unicorn. And some of you may have seen some of that in the Nick Now. There was, Laura had sent some stuff back and a couple of pictures and the highlights. But it was, it was pretty amazing, but it was a total team effort, and I just wanted to thank everybody. And then something that kind of escaped some of the folks' understanding is I was privileged to present, help build a package with some help, and I submitted and nominated Professor Tedman for instructor of the year for the region, for the entire Pacific region. And a well-deserved honor. And he got edged out by a gal in Washington, actually, and she ended up winning the national award. So the person that edged him out for the whole region ended up winning the national award. So I guess if you're going to lose, you might as well lose to the, you know, the winner of the whole thing. So, but I want to do a shout-out for both Ted and Casey. They did an amazing job, and for, and I still think Ted's the, should be the instructor of the year, and I think he's, I have tremendous respect for him, very high regard for both the gentlemen. So you all should be very proud, this college, and you guys and your colleagues, because they, yeah, anyway, I'll stop right there. But it was, it was a hell of an experience, and we did really great.
Well, I have to tell you, Todd, the last time I remember NIC presenting at a conference was probably 2004, and maybe '05. And I will tell you that I've been to some conferences over the years, and sometimes you get something out of it, but a lot of times what I have found is we're light years ahead of other institutions. And maybe I'm biased, but for professional development, it's a good thing for board members to do. But I was thrilled that we were presenting, two of our professors were presenting, and that you bird-dogged that and made it happen with the help of our team. And I hope we go back to the next conference and do it again. We should be presenting.
I think, I think they may invite us back, and I think we're already formulating plans to go back in two years to present the additional empirical data and the statistical data and what we've been able to advance, the adaptive learning process and the model and what we're doing, because it's both Gen Z and millennials, and it's very pertinent. And see, that was one of the things, two things that made us even more unusual. First off, if you go through the entire catalog, which I gave you a copy of, or the, not the catalog, but the, what do you call that? You know, the program for the whole event, we're like the only ones that had instructors briefing. And you could hear, it was audible whisper when they realized it was instructors. And then when Casey Wilhelm goes, yeah, and this is what I'm working on my PhD, and it's right in line, and it's like, you could just see there was the amount of respect and the fact that we brought, where the rubber hits the road, our instructors are the ones talking. It wasn't just a bunch of trustees and whatever. These are the guys that do it. These are the guys teaching the kids, and maybe not so much kids. So that was pretty cool because that made us very unique in that aspect, that we brought instructors and--
That's great. And what we'll do in the future is we'll put it on for celebrating success so we can bring in our professors and honor them for their hard work. So very nice. Thank you. Board, any questions under the president's report? So Todd, we'll have you continue on with K-Tech.
Enrollment is at about 4:30. That's the highest ever, so it's up this year. Some of you may saw in the newspaper the recent partnership that they've put together with Ford Motor Company. Mike White, who owns the local dealership, and the Ford corporate folks were all on campus. They had about a half a day's full of events. There's some apprenticeship program, a bunch of things going on. They've donated a vehicle or are donating a vehicle. I don't know if that's come yet, but they kind of talked about what it's going to be. Anyway, quite exciting, and the folks were, a great partnership. And so thank you for Mr. White and the local dealership stepping up in that role. The two new courses that we've been talking about are Go On Gangbusters, the HVAC course that we're working with K-Tech cooperatively, and the, that's doing great. And then the CNA program that they were able to add. They had a waiting list, and I believe they've got 12 in that right now. So HVAC has a little more capacity, but with the fact that it was turned on, turned off, turned on, turned off, and it was kind of at the end, actually, I think everybody's really pleased with the numbers that we have, and it will do nothing but grow. So that's pretty exciting. Now, if we got it established, I think we're going to see that thing just take off.
Yeah.
So that's working really well. The other thing I would say, if I may, is just that that whole, that whole program is just thriving. And one of the things, it's wonderful, you know, I'm on the board out there, and a couple of gentlemen from the community, from corporate industrial, and then it's the three superintendents. And the way the three superintendents work is, it's, it's great. It's admirable. You know, it's Lakeland, it's Post Falls, and it's Coeur d'Alene. And they just, I'm really impressed, you know. Sometimes those things can be turf wars and da-da-da, and it's just seamless out there. Everybody just works, and it's all, it truly, it actually is about the kids. And so I, that's a shout-out to the three school districts and those three superintendents because it's, and it's a pleasure to work with them. It's the most enjoyable board, I'll tell you. It's great people.
What, more than this? Hello?
They, you don't see them in the newspaper on the front page very often. It's not terribly contentious. They're doing, it's a very quiet, under-the-radar, great job, everybody seems to be happy, life is calm, you know? It's a little different paradigm, a little different scenario.
I think it's terribly important that we retain the North Idaho College Board seat, and I'm glad you're happy working with them. I think they're all wonderful professionals.
I think, whether it's me or whoever, yeah, we do need to stay engaged and maintain it. I think they greatly appreciate that partnership.
Yeah.
I know they do.
Great. Any questions, Todd? All right, good report. Thank you.
Yeah.
That takes us on to the Meyer Health Sciences Building Expansion update. Trustee Dunlap.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very brief. Last Tuesday, we had a workshop for the board to review the plans for the expansion of Meyer Health Science with the ALS-C architects, and we looked at some options as well as a discussion about future growth, whether in the midterm or long term, how we were going to deal with any further expansion of the health-related programs. Later in this meeting, Vice President Martin will talk more about the expansion of Meyer Health Science. So that's all the update I have for you.
All right. Thank you. On, let's see, under old business, I'm going to ask to table that item, and we'll save that for a future meeting. It was just really a refresher, but we'll table that one for now.
I have my timer on here.
I know. Darn it. We'll move on to new business. Do I need a motion on tabling that? I don't. What do you think? No? Okay. Under new business, tab one, first reading action item, Head Start Policy Council Bylaws and Self-Assessment Plan. Beth Ann Fuller, welcome.
Chair Wood, trustees, president's cabinet, President McLennan, I appreciate you allowing me to come for the first reading of our policy council bylaws and our self-assessment process. So our bylaws, the policy council that is comprised of at least 50% parents from our nine centers, has suggested some changes to their bylaws, and they are very minimal, and they include having to be able to remove the amount of people that can mandatorily be on a committee, a subcommittee that reports to the entire policy council committee, and also to just change some wording on electronic voting, since we have quite a few members that would like to have other alternative ways to be able to vote when we do do an electronic vote besides phones. So we have a lot of families that like to text and/or they are in areas that they don't receive phone calls, but they can receive either text messages or Facebook messages, things like that. So they would like to remove that word "phone vote" and replace it with "electronic vote." So that's that first piece for our bylaws. Our bylaws include great information about how, if there was ever an impasse between you as the Board of Trustees and the policy council as you're approving or disapproving of any changes to our program or to our grant. This includes exactly the process that you would go through to try to mitigate that impasse. And so every year, according to the Head Start Act, this just has to be brought to you to be, to be able to approve that, any changes to this. Self-assessment is also a process that we do every single year. This year, it's going to be impactful because this is the fifth year of our five-year grant. And although we've been approved to move forward with a new grant cycle, we have to reestablish all of our goals and objectives for this next year that will bring us through the next five years. And so we'd like to do a thorough self-assessment process, which would include using the federal monitoring tool that they will actually use with us in our first year, which would be next year. And we would like to use surveying and lots of community members and our policy council parents and parents on our parent committees at each of our centers to help us really assess our program, especially assess what our new goals should be as we move forward with this new five-year grant this following school year.
Okay. I have it on here as a first reading slash action item. Is there a time crunch on this?
No.
Okay. Board, any questions? Trustee Howard.
On the, using the Head Start Federal-Aligned Monitoring System, is that going to be the tool that you use then for self-assessment?
That would be the primary tool we'd like to use.
Right. And so that's already set forth in this federal program, I take it?
Yes.
All right. The other question I had was when you got to the changes on the number of individuals on these various committees, were you having difficulty getting people on the committees or what?
We're actually, have the opposite in that usually we either have more people than had actually signed up to be on the committees that come to the committee meetings and/or different people than signed up. So we didn't want to really limit that. Or sometimes if we have said there needs to be at least three, sometimes there may only be two. And then if that's meaningful dialogue, that subcommittee takes their recommendations to the full committee each time anyhow. And so they didn't want to limit it if they had some good dialogue and some good suggestions to the whole group to, if there were not three there, then they wouldn't be able to make recommendations to the whole committee.
Well, if the case is that you have too many-- Well, if the case is that you have too many people, in the old language, it says at least three shouldn't be a problem.
No, not at all. Yeah.
Why make the change?
Well, and there have been just a few incidents where there have been only two committee members that show up to look at, for an example, Nutrition Committee to make recommendations for changes to menus, and they have some great input, but they also just give their input of their committee. And then, the whole body also discusses the changes that they'd like to see to our nutrition program. So they didn't want to limit it as if the subcommittee shouldn't meet if only two people show up.
I mean, the Nutrition Committee was one of those areas where, quite frankly, I really had a question, because
Yeah.
It says Nutrition Committee, and it doesn't have any members to it. The other committees at least have a Policy Council Vice Chair or some administrative team, but the Nutrition Committee has nobody. If you don't have anybody as a mandatory member of that committee, how do you know the committee is doing its job? That doesn't make any sense.
So the Nutrition, the Subcommittee of Policy Council for Nutrition Committee looks at the recommendations. So first, it goes out to all cooks, and it goes out to parent committees. So those are the, at the centers, and the parent committees look at their individual menus and bring in those suggestions to the whole committee on what they would like to see. So that, the whole body of the parent committee, which is every parent in our program gets an opportunity to give us feedback, and then that comes into the Subcommittee for them to review. So there's quite a bit of information for them to review. Should there not be enough people to review that, to give a recommendation? The review would happen with the entire Policy Council.
All you're talking about is that there's a lot of information to be looked at, but the Nutrition Committee is not comprised of any people.
And it would be comprised of anybody who's interested in coming to that Subcommittee that's on Policy Council.
This is a bylaw.
Yeah.
And anyway, I don't think I could support that change.
Okay.
I think that if you're going to put this down, it's got to make some sense. The Nutrition Committee ought to be comprised at least of some fundamental representatives. If you want to expand it to a lot more, that's fine.
You bet.
But if it doesn't have any fundamental representatives on it, how do we know it's doing its job?
And we can certainly make a change like that quite easily. If you'd like me to present that with a change of some fundamental, like at least mentioning some fundamental people that need to be present, we can certainly do that and bring it to the next.
Yeah, I mean
To the second reading.
Yeah, whoever is responsible for making sure that you have a committee and it's doing its job.
Right.
And so, whoever's
Exactly. We can name our Nutrition Component Manager as the presenter, and then we can list, you know, at least some officer of the Policy Council as minimum, if you would prefer.
That would make more sense to me.
Okay.
I wanted to recognize Chris Martin.
Chair Wood, Trustee Howard, I just want to make one note. How these are developed are actually by that parent group. And so, we try to guide indirect, but ultimately, the Policy Council develops these bylaws on their own. And so, sometimes, we can help explain why that may or may not make sense, but I just want to give some background to, this is the parent organization, the volunteer group that actually sets these bylaws.
Well, Trustee Howard has indicated some changes he'd like to see. Since there's no time crunch on this, then I will ask you to go back to the group. That's the only feedback you're getting tonight, and if you would go back to the group and maybe review that with them, and then we'll have you for an action item at next month.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you very much. That takes us to Tab 2, First Reading. This is an action item on our copyright policy. Dr. McLennan.
Thank you, Chair Wood. The background on this, North Idaho College has not had a copyright policy, so a committee composed of staff and faculty was formed to develop one that serves to establish guidelines regarding the use of copyrighted materials. The policy and its related procedure were both reviewed and approved by Faculty Assembly, Administrative Council, President's Cabinet, and the College Senate. Under Discussion, the policy was written based on the United States Copyright Law, Title 17 U.S. Code, 1976, the Fair Use of Guidelines, 1997, the Teach Act of 2002, the Digital Millennium Copyright Act, or DMCA, and the DMCA exceptions of 2006. The Mulstead Library maintains and makes available the resources to understand copyright laws. This is being presented as a first reading. No action at this time.
Why do I have action on my agenda, I wonder?
Well, you have first reading and action, and we do that to allow for either of those things to happen.
Okay. Board, any questions on this copyright policy? Trustee Dunlap.
In reading through the policy, it appears that the onus is on a department or an individual in terms of being knowledgeable about copyright issues and compliance with those issues. And that's all well and good, however, there's no mention of any mandatory training or any awareness that is made for the employees. And so, unless I was an employee that was diligent and had dug through all the policies, I then may or may not choose to investigate what those requirements are. And so, to me, this is a little bit on the vague side for employees. Now, maybe there'll be something follow-on with procedures that we haven't seen, but I just have difficulty with that onus being placed on the individual and without any sort of assistance in terms of training taking place.
Thank you. Trustee Howard.
I guess I have the same concern. When I look at the section on overview and purpose, for instance, it says it is the responsibility of departments to consult and follow the copyright laws and to develop their own supplemental rules and procedures for copyright compliance as appropriate to address issues or materials unique to the department. That seems like a heavy burden to place on a department head. And then, when you go back into the policy and it says the fair use principles, that for the appropriate exercise of the fair use exemption depends on a case-by-case application, applying four factors. One of those factors is the effect of the use on potential market of the copyrighted work. How is an instructor to be equipped to test what the potential market is of the copyrighted work? Anyway, I just find that the, while I believe that each individual user has an obligation to comply with the copyright laws, they are fairly complicated in many areas. And I don't think that this policy leads somebody along a pathway that says, "Okay, I got a problem. How do I get it resolved?" So I would suggest that we add under Responsibilities section, where it says the North Idaho College President's Cabinet has responsibility for enforcing the policy and procedure, that we add something like, "Anyone having questions concerning proper compliance with the copyright requirements shall address them to the President's Cabinet," something like that, "who may then refer those concerns to legal counsel." I think ultimately, there are questions here that if they're, they need to be asked, they need to fundamentally be evaluated, and there needs to be an opportunity to have them reviewed by legal counsel. And I can tell you, if I was representing somebody whose infringement was challenged or was compromised, I think one of the first questions I'd ask is, "Did you ask your lawyer about this?" And I don't see any avenue here, pathway, to make sure that there's an opportunity to get legal advice on some question. Certainly, the questions need to be screened, I think, probably by the administration, so that every question that comes along doesn't have to go to counsel. But I would like to see something within the policy that provides an avenue for resolving those questions and doesn't leave it just on the shoulders of the department heads or the instructors.
Thank you. Dr. McLennan, you want to respond to that? And Mr. Lyons as well, if you'd like to go first.
So what you, and I'm trying to recall the procedures around this, what we did with that, but I know we didn't go in that direction with it. Dr. Burns? Yeah, that's correct. We did go through legal review with this quite a few times, back and forth, and I'm going to maybe ask Mark to respond to that.
Do you need a copy of the procedure?
Yes. This is a complicated area. It's necessary, because it is a really important issue for the college, the copyright issues. It is complicated, and it's difficult, and my office did a number of back-and-forth changes and made proposals on some of this. But, Trustee Howard, it is a good point that this burden is often on the instructors or individuals using this. And what we haven't done here is we have not provided a resource where it might be needed to at least get, for the individual who is responsible for the copyright compliance, to have that reviewed. So, yes, we can put that in policy, at least put a reference to it in policy, but I think in the procedure, maybe we can write something up so that, and I'm not sure how this is going to work with the administration, but I'm certainly happy to talk to the administration and about how to develop the discretion to allow an individual, a user or person who might be responsible for the copyright compliance, to get resourced through the college for some legal review where appropriate. Exactly what the parameters are, I'm not sure. We'll have to talk that through. We've got a month, and we could make an effort to do that.
And so, along those lines, once you've come to a good resolution with that, what kind of training do we do with those kind of critical policies? Most policies don't require any training, but maybe this one does. Or at least a resource, an online resource. I don't know. Give that some thought.
Yeah.
But, thank you. Good input. Okay, that takes us on to Tab 3, First Reading for Technology Accessibility Policy. Ken Werdenski, thank you. Welcome.
I'll share this one with my colleague, Mr. Grillitz, too. Thank you, Chair Wood, and member trustees. What I present tonight is Policy 3.08.09, which is Information, Electronic Information Technology Accessibility. There's, the primary focus of this policy is that any public digital resource that NIC puts out to the public is inherently accessible by current accessibility guidelines. Then we tag what we call limited use. So if you think about going to a website, you have a website presented to you with all this digital information, videos are captioned, that's kind of what we want to get to. Limited use means that I have to do a login to get to it, at which point, it becomes an accommodation. So if you look at a building, for instance, a building will have elevators, they'll have ramps, they're just inherently accessible by nature. That's what a public resource would be. When you get to the login aspect, then we get to accommodation. And I believe my colleague, Mr. Grillitz, will admit that on an accommodation level, every individual is different, so you work with an individual employee or an individual student to accommodate them for an equitable access in a classroom. What we're talking about is kind of that larger scope. Then, we also tagged what is called a legacy resource, which would be anything after, or if, if the board approves this as an official policy for the board, anything retroactive from that date would be considered a legacy resource, because it would be a massive undertaking to just all of a sudden say everything is now accessible, at which point, if someone had wanted access to a legacy resource, we would then make it available on an accommodation that's a reasonable accommodation. For example, the library has transcribed the popcorn series. So if someone came back and said, "I want all of these accessible and transcribed," we would probably say, "Is there a particular one that you really want to do?" Because there's a cost burden in doing so, but we would be happy to accommodate that part of it. So what the policy really gets at is just making sure that any public resource is natively accessible. The questions that the board usually comes up with, that I can assume the board would have, is, "How do you pay for this?" In 2017, we received state line item funding to support accessible technology from the state, as well as base funding for a position of a technology, of accessible technology coordinator, that is now NIT, to oversee this action. So we have ongoing support from the state to accommodate making sure that we have this accessible resource available. In other words, tools to make accessible websites, accessible captioning, these kind of resources are available to us today and on an ongoing year-to-year basis. Second question that usually comes up, if you dig into the details, is in Section 508 of the Rehabilitation Act in the past, there were no clear guidelines on how you accomplish this from a website. In January of 2017, they put into the revised standards of the 21st Century Act, actual standards from a consortium of how you code to accessibility. For instance, you don't do a bold tag anymore, you would a strong one. Instead of using italic, you use emphasize, so a screen reader knows to emphasize that word when it's reading through a screen. So we now have standards that we can compare ourselves and test for this kind of accommodation. I'll be happy to answer any other questions you might have on it.
Questions, Board?
Well, I was going to ask how much this is going to cost.
Yeah. Well, I would like to, Jake Guerinter, could you go back and thank the state for that ongoing? We appreciate it. Very nice. Thank you. Good presentation. Takes us to Tab 4, and this is an action item, Meyer Health and Science Building Expansion Project. Chris Martin.
Chair Wood, members of the board, excited to come before you tonight. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about the expansion of the Meyer Health Science Project. As you're aware, the college has engaged ALSC, along with our program directors, division chairs, deans, and faculty in the design of it in addition to the Meyer Health Science Building, to expand classroom and science lab capacity. We've completed the schematic design portion of the project in September. It's slated to be approximately 20,000 square feet over two floors. It will include four labs, a cadaver lab, five team rooms, four classrooms, and supporting offices. During our past two separate board workshops, we've received some great feedback and direction on scope, and we will be implementing this feedback and direction from the board in the design development phase. This evening, we are requesting authorization to move forward with the proposed schematic design with the anticipation to take the project to bid for construction in 2010. Our current plan is, with the latest budget update that you received at the workshop, to use that as a maximum cost for the project, with our team's deep commitment that we will meet or improve all the budget scope during the design development phase.
Chris, what year is it?
2019.
Okay. So you're thinking 2020, not 2010, right?
I am thinking 2020.
Okay, great.
That's what I have written down even.
Board, any questions? Do I have a motion on this?
It's a good thing you're the numbers guy.
I know, right? Let's go back in time.
I guess I have a question in order to be able to formulate a motion. What you seem to be requesting is just sort of a carte blanche approval to move forward with the program. There's no numbers on it, there's no, are you going to come back to us? Is it going to be interim? You want so much for the planning process and so much for the building process?
We want, at this point, a maximum authorization for $8.2 million in construction.
As for design and construction?
Yes, sir.
When we were looking at it at the workshop, there seemed to be at least some question about changes in the layout, maybe looking for putting on a third story. I don't know if they're still looking at that. That's all included in this proposal?
This proposal is the two stories and those four labs and the four classrooms.
So, Ken, we didn't give them that direction.
No, I know we didn't. They were going to look at it, that's all.
We aren't able to add a third story on that facility because of the location on campus. We did go back and confirm that.
You are or not?
We are not able to do that on that location.
Okay. So that's been confirmed, because that was one of the questions, would the PUD, what do we call it?
Correct.
PUD has the height limitations, and it varies across our campus.
That's correct.
For that location, we are height limited at this time.
We are.
Okay.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Or, do you have another question?
One more question.
Sure.
Because maybe I'm thinking like, Ken is a little bit here, I'm not sure, but we did have a lot of discussion, and we asked some questions at the end, and there was a couple, "What about this? What about that?" Maybe I'm not clear, at the very end, did we just decide that it was either not time or cost-effective or limited by scope, that we really weren't asking any more questions or exploring any more things, and that what we got at the end is kind of what we were just moving forward with?
No, what, if you recall, what we suggested was No, if you recall, what we suggested was, this project, for sure, we wanted to move forward. We don't want to hold it up by another year. But we did ask administration to go ahead and launch basically a study on what we think we may need in the health sciences. And so we can take formal action on that, but we gave them a direction that that's what we'd like to see, and that would be our next project.
Okay, so any expansions to the west, or to the north, or the parking lot, or trying to squeeze a little more, or is Ken asking, maybe we don't have the skeleton on the window, if we can save some money? And how the swales are working, is there any way to squeeze anymore? Did we decide that we're not going to be capable under the current project to try to find any additional square feet, or adjust the square feet that we have?
Madam Chair and trustee Banducci, we are definitely going back and looking at the skeleton on the glass and the swales and everywhere we can find cost savings. We are taking that direction and we will be reducing this budget through the design development phase. That's our plan going forward, but we did not anticipate adding health professions labs in this phase.
President McLennan?
Thank you, Chair Wood. The discussion at the board workshop about health occupations and the need for those spaces, we did hear that. I would like to encourage the board to maybe think of, we have an existing facility master plan that we've gone through in a very deliberate manner to produce. It's guiding certainly this first project that we're talking about, and there are others that are lined up that have also been the subjects of board workshops as we've gone through the last year or so. It would be, from a process perspective, I think prudent for us to go back through that work and check the alignment of our priorities. And that was one of the, that was not an area that was under, it didn't rise to that level of consideration in the current plan. It may need to do so now, given the conversations and the point in time that we are now. But I would, rather than deliver this as a priority for a next funded project, I would encourage us to go back through that planning process and check our alignment of our priorities and our facility master planning needs.
Yeah.
As a suggestion.
That's fine. If the board wants to put it on the agenda and have discussion about that after you gather that information, that probably makes more sense. Trustee Howard?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the administration to move forward with the proposed schematic design in amount not, and authorize the spending of an amount not in excess of 8.2 million to come out of the capital fund.
Capital improvement fund?
Yeah, capital improvement fund.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Dunlap. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, thank you all for the hard work on this. It's been a long time coming. Dr. McLennan, I have you up next for an action item.
Thank you. When we prepare the recommendations for the board, a board meeting schedule for the year, Shannon and I do a thorough job as possible in looking out to what the obligations are going to be that might come into conflict with our regular board meeting dates. We learned of one after the schedule was set, and that is, I serve on an American Association of Community Colleges Advisory Board on community college apprenticeship, and they meet three times a year, and this meeting was not set at that time and has now been set in conflict with the regularly scheduled January board meeting. So Shannon sent you all a heads-up email looking at an alternative date to that, and that date was January 15th in place of the regularly scheduled January 22nd date.
Okay. And needing a motion on that? Do I have a motion to reschedule the January 2020 board meetings?
I move that we change the date from January 22nd to January 15th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Murray. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Very well. All right, that takes us to tab five, our information item, official fall enrollment. Grayden Stanley, Diana Rentsch.
Good evening again, Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, colleagues and guests. Again, my privilege to bring you the information on our fall enrollment. I want to recognize Diana Rentsch, who's in the back of the room here, our associate vice president, planning and effectiveness, who is standing by to rescue me when I present statistics that aren't accurate or you ask too difficult a question. So thank you very much, Diana. She also provided much of the information that I'll be presenting to you tonight. Unfortunately, and I apologize, you don't have a hard copy of this in front of you tonight. Some of this may be difficult for you to read on the screen tonight. I'll be glad to send this along through Shannon and have it sent out to you afterwards. If you have other questions about it, I'd be glad to respond to that. As you recall, board members, that we have two different times during the year that we're required to report enrollment to the state. There's an October 15th deadline and a March 15th deadline. So as October 15th have passed, we took a look at our enrollment figures and compared those to October 15th last year. Most of the numbers that you'll see in this report are snapped on that October 15th deadline, although some, like what was mentioned in your board tab, that talked about a reduction in enrollment this year of 5.2% in headcount, 5.4% in FTE. That was as of Monday, so a little later than that October 15th date. As you might guess, our enrollment fluctuates from week to week a bit, just because there may be late start classes, there could be dual enrollment classes that come online, or there may be students that are dropping from attendance here as well. So that enrollment can change slightly. I am going to direct your attention to the slides, and this one was probably most significant, and I'm going to look at it from here. To share with you those figures I just mentioned, down at the very bottom, we take a look at a change in FTE, a one-year change. This one happens to say 5.7 as of this last week. It is 5.4. And then on the five-year percent change, over the course of five years, what's the change? It's 11.5% decline. Boy, that's going to be difficult for you to see, but I think the trend lines will really tell the stories for you here. You're going to hear, over the course of this year, a lot of information about, and Chris mentioned it in his budget presentation, about the emphasis on retention and enrollment overall. But particularly with retention, this tells a story about the green line that you can see that's relatively flat, is the enrollment from 2014 through 2019 of new students coming to the institution. So when you see those that are accessing the college, that's been relatively flat. But the blue line up above is the enrollment of students, again, through 2014 through 2019, of continuing students. Those students who were here previously are eligible to enroll the next semester, the next year in this case. And you can see, that's declined considerably. And so a point of emphasis in our strategic enrollment management, our efforts here on campus, is certainly a focus on retention, those students that are already enrolled here, and they're continuing their enrollment through completion. The next one, following the trends here, this is headcount that we're looking at, full and part-time. And it's, there is something of interest here in another slide that'll follow that might address a question that you would have. So as you note, this starts in 2006 and goes all the way to fall of 2019. And as you look, the orange side is part-time enrollment, the blue side is full-time enrollment, headcount's that way. And so you can see, as we go from about fall of 2014 on, that part-time enrollment considerably exceeds and grows much faster than the full-time enrollment that way. I think two things to note, and while it's not proven, it would make sense here, is that there was a change that we made in terms of pricing of our credits here. We went to a per-credit cost, I believe that was in 2014. It did not change the credit-taking behavior as much as you might think, and we'll see a slide about that later on. But also, this, the part-time has to do, again, we believe with the economy, in that students have jobs that they can access, and so they're able to go to school part-time and work. When we get to those dates, when you go back at high enrollment dates in fall 2011, fall 2012, in the middle of that slide, students didn't have an option to work. So students instead, there were more of them full-time, because they didn't have other options. During the last four or five years, they have the option of doing both. They can work, they usually can't go to school as much full-time, but they can go part-time. And so we believe that accounts for that increase in part-time students. The next one is headcount by student type, excuse me. And these are from the left-hand side, general studies are the blue graph, dual credit is the orange graph in the middle, and career and technical are the gray ones on the right-hand side. Follows the trend of our enrollment overall. The part that particularly doesn't surprise you would be, again, with the orange bar, that's growth in dual credit. And you know you've seen that over these last several years, dramatic growth in that arena. The decrease in general studies has been more dramatic. We've had a small decrease in career and technical enrollment, and that follows the trend you've been aware of over the last four to five years. This one, I, and I'm sorry again that this is difficult to read, but was, what was important to note about this, Vice President Martin and his staff a couple of years ago started talking to you about what's the impact on revenue according to student type, meaning that an in-district student you know pays a certain amount, and a Washington student pays a certain amount, an out-of-state student pays a certain amount, dual credit pays a certain amount. So even though we had a huge increase in dual credit in terms of revenue growth wasn't as much, because we know they were paying $65 a credit. So the impact based on student type of enrollment, so Vice President Martin and his staff put this together, and they had projected based on revenue expected by student type, that there would be a certain dollar amount that we would arrive at for fall semester enrollment. Chris had talked about, we didn't reach that mark. We reached 94% of the target in terms of revenue that's connected to enrollment. A couple of things to note in that is that the projection on in-district was a bit down. It was about 89% of the 100% expected. The prediction on non-district, out-of-district, was about right on. We were surprised by, in the WUII area, the number of students that came from the 11 WUII states, the revenue exceeded by about 13% what was predicted that way. And so that was a bit of a surprise from out-of-state. But we were disappointed, too, that our in-district closest to us is where we missed the mark in terms of enrollment. Chris, is there anything else you would add to that that would explain that further? This is, these bands are for fall enrollment by age band. And again, what I would point out to you without you having direct access to the numbers, the most important one for you to look at there, and it's easy to explain, these are broken down by 18 to 20-year-olds, less than 18-year-old, 21 to 25, and then 26 to 30, 31 to 40, 41 to 50, and so on, different age bands. As you might guess, as we get further down, the graphs at the bottom represent those that are primarily in that 41 and older age bands. The ones that is significant to look at, you can see there's only one up there that has fairly dramatic growth, and that is in the less than 18. And you can imagine what accounts for that growth. In the less than 18 is those dual-credit students that are generally less than 18 years of age.
We have a quick question, trustee Banducci.
Yeah, and I, sorry to interrupt you, but because it's on the previous slide. Am I seeing this accurate? I'm asking a question, but, so the academic transfers, where we're seeing the decline, dual enrollment, we didn't get the revenue we were looking at. But it looks like even though we were down in enrollment with CTE, we still exceeded our projections for revenue. Am I seeing that correctly?
I think that's right, and I want to have Vice President Martin check me on that. That's because, as you see, the credit-taking, the credit-taking in the CTE programs was higher than, that has been increased. The number of credits of full-time students in CTE, that actually increased, and on a cost by credit, that would increase your revenue in that area.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I was seeing that correctly.
These are total enrolled student credit hours, so it's total credit hours, that includes dual-credit, CTE, transfer programs that way. And so a trend that shouldn't catch you by surprise, that's what we've seen a bit. We were disappointed, we were down the close to 5% this year, but following a trend. These are average credit hours for full-time and part-time students. And so the blue represents full-time. The average credit hours, if you could see that line there where most of the blue numbers are at, is 14 credits. And you can see the variance between fall of 2006 and fall of 2019. And that's what I was talking about, that credit-taking behavior of full-time students, it's hovered around 14 credits pretty much all along. It didn't change dramatically, regardless of maybe our pricing that we did on a per-credit basis. If you look at the part-time, the average part-time load has stayed pretty stable as well. Those students that are part-time, under 12, then that average is about six credits, and that stayed stable during that period of time. This is average credits by student type, and this is full-time only. So this will answer that question, trustee Banducci, that you were talking about with CTE. So again, general studies is blue, dual credit is the orange, career and technical is the gray. So this is by full-time only. So when you see the gray ones there that are high, that's representing career and technical, and those are all generally up above, and they're between 15.5 and 16 credits, even when we get to fall of 2019. They're above 15, and as you compare those to transfer, dual-credit, it's considerably more. So those CTE programs that are usually prescribed, they're not choosing four or five classes, they're in a prescribed program that says, "You have to have 15 credits, you have to have 16." So they're going to generate more credits in those CTE programs. And that is it. I'd be glad to answer any questions, or I'd be glad to have Diana come up and answer your questions.
Board, any specific questions? Trustee Howard?
I forget, what was the projected enrollment for this year?
That we used for budget purposes.
Right.
It was flat.
That's what I thought. And we were looking at a trend line last year that we thought it would flatten out, and it was getting close to what it was pre-recession. But it's going lower than it was pre-recession. Is that right? So what's going to be the projection for next year? Flat?
Madam Chair, trustee Howard, on the initial budget review, we've looked at continuing the trend down and forecasting a 4.5% decline next fall, for the purposes of setting the budget.
Okay. And, go ahead.
Just so the, so the budget information that we presented you earlier included that four and a half, that included a nothing-new, worst-case scenario, and a nothing-change, worst-case scenario with enrollment to get to that two-plus-million-dollar problem. That's our worst-case scenario view right now.
I don't know if I'm understanding you right, but the scenario that you gave us didn't include a 4% or 5% reduction in enrollment?
It did.
Did not, did?
It did.
Okay. So when you say that the, this FTE, or the headcount at 5.2 and FTE at 5.4, there's no financial impact on that, is there a financial impact in us not having the enrollment we thought we were going to have?
Oh, I'm sorry if I stated something about financial impact, there certainly was. And that was, Vice President Martin, when he was making his presentation and talking about budget, talked about the loss this fall semester, and a projected loss if we perform at a similar level for spring semester. So if that was said, no, there certainly was a loss as a result of underperforming what our budget was projected on.
I was just going off, it says, on our handout material, it says, "Financial impact, none."
On the board tab.
On the, oh.
Okay.
I didn't want to alarm you before you got here tonight.
Don't save those things.
You only gave me three minutes, if you'll recall from my earlier meeting.
I think the report itself had no financial impact.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Grayden?
Chair Wood, if I may, I'd like to just add, as much as we're certainly not pleased with that enrollment report, and we would like to perform better, we certainly think it's a cultural thing as well. I think we know in Idaho, as we look at go-on rates, as we look at enrollments, we're at a time with, it's a great economy. It's like trustee Dunlap was talking about, what happens in terms of state support. We have our people who might be in college who are out working instead. That's probably a good thing for our economy, it's not necessarily a good thing in terms of our revenue connected to enrollment. So we're not terribly surprised, but not pleased about that. That doesn't mean that we aren't very intentional about the actions that we're taking. You've heard this year about a number of things that are in place, including a resetting of the strategic enrollment management. of the Strategic Enrollment Management Committee and work that they're doing. A number of those members are with us here tonight. Some of the priorities you've heard about is an emphasis on advising. That certainly has impact on enrollment and particularly retention, the area that we need to address. Cardinal Central that you've had a report about as well, and having that one-stop-shop for students certainly impacts. And we had feedback through a survey about how pleased they were about receiving services that they were getting there. We have a partnership that we've been working on with the Communications and Marketing Department and enrollment services to be real aggressive in what we're doing toward recruitment and retention, including emphasis on spring semester. As much as Vice President Martin talked about potentially a $350,000 impact on spring enrollment, we're doing everything to mitigate that by being real aggressive in our strategies right now with the students that are here, to retain them into spring semester and reach out to our community and get more students to enroll new during spring semester than we generally have. There's emphasis on orientation, there's emphasis in instruction, certainly on scheduling of classes, making those more accessible to students through the support of our Foundation Office. There's emphasis on providing scholarships so that there are fewer financial barriers and utilizing that money in a strategic way to recruit and to retain our students. So we certainly are focused on what we need to do and will work within all our resources to impact this enrollment as best we can and change some of the culture here in North Idaho in our state.
Very good. Trustee Howard.
Yes, ma'am. On your graph, in terms of our enrollment being significantly lower in terms of full-time students and higher in terms of part-time students, could you talk to me a little bit about what that impact may be on completion goals? Because a lot of the funding was being talked about being focused on completion. And if we have a lot more part-time students, they're not going to complete as quickly. How is that going to impact those goals?
It certainly does have a lot of impact on us that way. We know there's a lot of studies that have been done that completion is most enhanced when students stay on time, they go full-time. We've had this incentive for the 15 to finish, to incentivize students that way as well. So it has a lot of impact. But it's also part of the reason, as we were talking about IPED's reports versus VFA reports, the voluntary framework of accountability, that instead of trying to measure students' completion as being successful by doing that in three years, one and a half times a two-year degree, the VFA looks at six years for you to be able to measure successful completion over a six-year period because credit-taking behavior, the swirl of community college students being in, out, going to other institutions and coming back, takes a longer period of time for them to complete. So I think there's some understanding that it's typical of community college students to maybe not take 15 credits, to not finish necessarily in two years. And so the measures changed a bit to identify what is success in completion.
And is there still discussion about state funding based upon completion?
It is resurfacing. We don't know what shape that's going to take this legislative session. There's some indication that there may be a movement to introduce it without additive funding. So the, well, and not to go back into the kind of the pro-formal work that we did last year and the year before, we benefited from the formula with the new funding because of our outcomes. If the funding doesn't come with that, it's a pretty devastating picture for North Idaho College. So I'm not sure why, we don't have enough information yet to understand why that's, or how much traction that has, or if it's going to have a sponsor. But it's come into the level of LSO indicating that that's something that's on the horizon for us to pay attention to. And that's another whole ballgame if that happens.
Well, part of the problem before was the definition of completion or success or whatever label you want to put on it. Is there still a debate going on about how to define completion or funding purposes?
There's still interest in, by many, in counting smaller bite-sized credentials on the completion, in the completion story. We did get to the certificate level to count for completion, and that was one important step. The other important step was that the funding pot was contained just among the four community colleges. We were only competing for those, that outcomes-based funding with the other three community colleges, which meant relatively even playing field because one of our concerns going into this was that that differentiation had not happened. And, but I don't have, we don't have enough knowledge now to know what this new iteration is, if it's saying we're going to take the work that, by the way, the work that all eight institutions came to in consensus as an approach for outcome-based funding. If they take that model but don't fund it, we, again, we've got some pretty big problems.
It just seems like another factor that's shifting that really affects the state funding, or may affect the state funding substantially.
And that's one of the, that's, we learn more about that and where this might go. It certainly means education outreach to our delegation here in the north to make sure people really understand the impact that will have on North Idaho College.
Thank you.
That takes us on to the board chair report. Before I start, I just had a quick question because it seems like the board should start gearing up for this. And I didn't know, Laura, do you know when we're looking at going to Boise? Do we have any dates in mind? Not yet?
No.
I should probably do an update on that.
Okay. There could be some different opportunities this year that we're looking at, including potentially, and I'll defer to the president because I know he's been working with the other three community college presidents, as well as the four-year presidents, on an opportunity at the governor's, you know, start off of the legislative session in early January, that might be an opportunity. And as we start looking at what roles and value we have down with JFAC and others, that it's a moving target right now, but I'll let you speak to that first potential kickoff.
Thank you for asking the question. So I think you know, the eight public institution presidents have now formed, the reformed Higher Education Presidents Council is now the President's Leadership Council with, I would say, genuine new energy about collaboration. The four, four-year public presidents are relatively all-new, and they have been brought on board with the expectation by the state board that they do a much better job collaborating. We have held a full-day retreat this summer. We've had monthly meetings that have now, half-day meetings where we're actually looking at strategic priorities as a state system of higher education. To that end, for the legislative session, there's a desire, it's been communicated to the governor's office, that on the day of the State of the State address, that all of the public institutions, along with the state board, and I would add invitations to trustees from the community college, to host a reception for all of the state legislature, state legislators to help develop relationships and have them experience the spirit of these eight institutions really trying to work together for Idaho. We had the governor's office represented at our last PLC meeting and carry that message back and is working to make that arrangement. As far as Education Week goes, you know, JFAC is becoming a much more of a, let somebody go through the numbers. We certainly don't have any line items to request. We could probably go there again and tell a little bit about our story. I don't know how helpful that is and the kind of the constraints that are around that. But with House Ed and Senate Ed, the eight of us, again, are looking at taking a full day to do House and Senate and to have an overview of the PLC as a group and then do presentations as a four-year segment and a two-year segment, but to do that together at the same time. So much more of a unified sort of an approach to the legislature. That's still being developed, nothing's set yet. The dates for the legislative, for the Ed Week, I believe, are the week of January 21st, somewhere in that timeframe, similar to other years. But we'll certainly get more information. We're also working to develop a, I always refer to it as a going-away party, but it's the Going to Boise Party for the local legislative delegation, North Idaho delegation. And Laura can probably add a little bit of information about that.
Great. Yes, I wanted to share, of course, some of the pre-opportunities we have to have those one-on-one conversations with our legislative contingency out of the north. As the president said, we've worked in the past with many of our key partners in the region, the Joint Legislative Affairs Committee from both the post-falls and the Courtland Chambers. We just welcomed the new CEO of the Courtland Chamber at the annual meeting today. And I've already been in conversations with regards to the role they would like to play on that. Looking at, we're working on, I actually have a meeting on Friday to try and narrow down a date to make certain gets on your calendar sooner rather than later. But we're looking for that social legislative discussion time to celebrate for them, send off the week of December 9th. Another opportunity that we do have that I just briefed the president on earlier today is that the House, the House side and their leadership is looking at going around the state in the month of December and doing a series of town halls, bringing up some key leadership on the House side from a variety of different places, areas all throughout Idaho. One of the stops they've made a request is Courtland. We've had some outreach about hosting it here on our campus at North Idaho College. And I'm trying to finalize the details on that, but we have a placeholder right now for December 17th on that. So as we start to finalize and solidify some of these logistics, we'll make certain we let you know as soon as possible. And that December 17th date is a Tuesday.
Good. So, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Trustee Howard.
You know, my experience in going down to Boise for the, what is called Education Week, the last couple of years, quite frankly, has been kind of a wasted trip. To the extent that we were able to interact with the other boards of the other community colleges, it's been very helpful. But in terms of going down to the legislature and sitting there and listening to the president's presentation, and other than the fact that we get introduced, we don't really have much of an opportunity to do anything of value. And I'm more than willing to go down and do whatever we can if we can do something of value. But it seems like the legislature is sort of programming us out of a lot of the participation. And to the extent that that continues, quite honestly, I'd just as soon meet with the other community colleges as a focal point and then not do much with the legislature. I'd love to meet the legislature up here, having the House visit up here in December, and you know, having us have an opportunity to meet with them sounds like a great idea. But the Education Week passed seems to be, have changed so much that I'm not sure it has much value, at least for me as a trustee.
So I understand that feeling because it has changed a lot. But I still, first of all, if we didn't go, they're very noticeable. But I do think that there's value with elected officials talking to elected officials, and the networking time is what's good for us. You're right, we go and we sit, and now we're watching where we don't even really get to do any line items, we don't even get to tell our story. It's quite frustrating how much it's changed. But I still think there's value in the one-on-ones with trustees and elected officials, and then absolutely what you've talked about of keeping in touch with the other community colleges. And maybe even throwing in a little professional development like we have in the past with those groups. So I guess I want to hang in there. Trustee Dunlap.
In light of Trustee Howard's comments, I wonder what the efficacy would be in us meeting individually with legislators up here prior to them going down there, where we would have their undivided attention for a period of time where we could discuss our issues? Because down in Boise, they're very busy running from one meeting to the next, from one session to the next, from one committee meeting to the next. And it would seem to me that we may have a greater opportunity to create an impression on them for the issues that are important to us if we did that up here.
More FaceTime, the better. Can't disagree with that. So, go ahead.
Well, I, just sort of as an observation, one of the reasons why I made the comment that I did was the last time I was down there, members of the other boards from the other colleges who were local did not show up.
Ah.
So. You know, we're all questioning the value right now. I mean, especially with the JFAC piece of that. You don't want to disrespect JFAC by not being there, at least I don't. I think I need to be there as president. But it would be just as technically effective to have Chris Martin go and go through the numbers with the LSO, you know, folks. That's about the extent of the true engagement that we're having. Not to diminish Chris's role in any way, I don't mean it that way.
Well, to the, I guess to the extent that we do anything with the legislature to try and help, help them understand what we're all about, if we could design a program to do that, that would be great. And so maybe this past opportunities to do it should be redesigned into a future opportunity of some sort that gives us the opportunity, as Jill has mentioned or whatever, for us to meet with the legislatures and express to them our concerns about certain of those legislations.
Yeah. Trustee Banducci.
Just a thought, hearing the valid discussion here and the concerns and the points being made, so I don't know quite whether we, how we strike the balance, but I will say one thing. To Ken's point, the fact that they're not there, though, I do think is noticed, and I do think we need a presence because of our lack of proximity to the Capitol. Guys like Burt can talk to them all the time, and there's people circling. And it was an interesting thing that occurred, I was able to accompany Grayden and some of our outstanding scholars to Boise, and they were scholars from each of the other institutions. And you know, and this is not a comment against anybody here, because we sent me as a representative. So our board was represented, I was the only trustee there. And we did the thing with the governor, we did with Lieutenant Governor McGeechan, I was engaged, we did the photo ops, we were in the room. You know, Governor Little came in, shook my hand, you know, I know him, and so we visited. But it was noticed that we had a trustee there, and we had the support and the people there. So I'd like to hope that we can do it wisely as we spend our money, our, you know, our dollars. But we do need some representation. But it is noted, and it was kind of a big deal that I was the only trustee there. And Grayden can speak to that because I was warmly engaged there by several folks, and it was noted.
Good, good. Okay, well.
We'll work on it.
All right. You'll let us, you'll get back to us. So the only other thing under my report is last week I was invited by retired Professor Tony Stewart to go to the retiree luncheon here held at Emory's. And that was so fun. Rick spoke, former President Bob Bennett spoke. Joe, we should have had you there, what the heck?
Well, I didn't know about the date, frankly.
Okay. And anyway, it was great because some, several of them were my former instructors when I was a student here, and then also I got to work with them in a professional manner as a, on the board. And what a great group of people. They come out, every six months they're doing this, right? They do a retiree luncheon?
Yes, sir.
And talk about a lot of dedicated people that just truly continue to give back. They give their money towards scholarships. They haven't walked away from NIC, they're very much engaged. And I really had a great time, and Emory's food was amazing. Our, a lot of students in that program, and they came out and introduced themselves, and it was just really a fun time. So six months from now, the next one, maybe we can find, I just happen to know about it, it probably wasn't something you sent out, but I got an invite. Maybe the other trustees would enjoy that as well.
Joe, Trustee Dunlap, I don't want you to feel excluded.
No, no, I don't.
Because in Bob Bennett's comments, he mentioned that he had never been invited to that.
Yeah, never. Former presidents don't generally get invited, but anyway, it was great fun. And that's all I had. Anything remarks for the good of the order?
Yeah. Not to extend the meeting any longer, but I do want to express my appreciation to NIC for support and providing me an opportunity to go down to the ACC trustee, the conference. With some bias, but not much, Todd and Casey and Ted's presentation was by far the best I saw. And I saw some really good ones that Thursday. One made me think of our technology here and the safeguards we have in place because it was about a cyber heist. So I just, it provides you with some rejuvenation and lots of ideas, maybe too many ideas when you leave a conference, you want to come back and implement so many. But I do appreciate the professional development opportunity that I ever see. But I do appreciate the professional development opportunity that I received, so thank you.
Wonderful. Good. Thank you for going. All right, we are adjourned.